Okay, folks, go call this meeting orders. Stand for the flags if you please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Redmond?
Here.
Councilmember Sackler?
Here.
Councilmember Sterns?
Here.
Mayor Protempur?
Here.
Mayor Collins? Here. Gary, come on up. How do you pronounce your last name?
German.
Just like you.
Just like it is. But I'm not German, so.
Gary is going to give us the annual invasive weed pulling event details. Please start any time you're ready.
Yes, hi, my name is Gary German. I'm on the board of the Mount Shasta Area Audubon Society, and we are the lead sponsor for the annual community invasive weed pull event. That event is set for Saturday, April 30th this year. We'll be meeting at nine o'clock here, looking for volunteers to show up and have a good morning workout, addressing some of the invasive weeds that are threatening our local ecosystem. This year, our primary emphasis is on Scotch broom. It's a weedy bush that's about three to eight feet tall, has small green leaves and bright yellow flowers, just like this. It's a real pretty plant. Unfortunately, it outcompetes our native wildlife. The local wildlife doesn't use it. It outcompetes native plants, and it's a fire hazard. So we're going after about an acre and a half patch not too far from here that produces maybe a million seeds per year, and we're hoping to push that back and get rid of them. This is the seventh year we've done it, and we've had good luck so far pushing back plants back from the roadways and creeks and things like that in our parks. So we're just looking for your support. In closing, I'd like to thank our cosponsors, the Mount Shasta Trail Association, the Siski Land Trust, the Rotary Chamber of Commerce, Forest Service, Fire Safe Council, Mount Shasta Regional Ecology Center, and of course, the city of Mount Shasta. So, thank you, and if there's any questions or if anybody would like a handout to post in their businesses, I'll be happy to pass them around.
Yeah, first, any questions, folks? Can we have some of those handed out?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
And you can get a little dirty and-
Thank you, Gary.
Get rid of those weeds. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move into public comment. Is anybody on the list, Catherine?
I forgot the silent, I'm sorry. Hi, guys, you all know me, Nion Shepard from Mount Shasta. You recently chaired me on the planning commission, as well as I was chair on DIAC committee. I got some horrible news a little over three weeks ago, that I had three to six months to live and 5% chance of actually living. So I had to drop everything. I dropped all of our farmers markets and outside events that we do as a business. Since then, new test results, new doctors, all that stuff is looking a lot more optimistic. But my first point is, don't rule me out. When I'm done with this, I'll be back with new ideas and more input for the city to become a better place. My second item was something that you guys discussed on the last meeting, was military equipment for the police department. And I think our new police chief is fantastic. I think most of our officers are great. But statistically, if you look nationwide, a number of police officers were involved in the January 6th insurrections that happened in the Capitol. A number of police officers are QAnon supporters, that kind of thing. And we pay them to essentially sit through trauma, heavy trauma situations. That's what they're paid to do. Equipping them with military equipment is a horrible idea, as far as having the community and City Hall and the police department all in one community. The thing is, is that if you spent that money on a social worker to go on calls, to de-escalate situations, you probably have a lot less violence. And if you start equipping them with military-grade equipment, it's going to cause a much bigger separation between the community and the City Hall and the police department. So I'm very against that, and I think you guys should really, really consider the trauma that we put these officers through, and decide whether it's in the best interest of our community to equip them with military-grade equipment. So, thanks.
Thank you, Nion. Anybody else here want to speak during public comment? No hands raised? Again, thank you, Nion. Council and staff comments. Teresa, anything on your end? And Catherine, no. Let's bring it up back to council. Wow. Okay, I'll go with that. Committee updates. Is anybody going to do them? As Todd is not here?
Please, so I would just like to state that all of our committees have vacancies, so if anybody's interested, please see me at City Hall. Kathy Joyce, deputy city clerk.
Well, let's move on to the consent agenda, then. City manager recommends approval of the following consent agenda items. All resolutions and ordinances on this agenda or added here too shall be introduced or doubted as applicable by title only, and the full reading thereof is hereby waived. A, approval of the minutes, March 28th, 2022, regular and special city council meetings. B, approval of disbursements, accounts payable March 23rd, 2022, and the total gross payroll and taxes for the period ending March 20th, 2022. Community meetings, committee minutes, downtown enhancement advisory committee, February 23rd, 2022, the regular meeting. And D, the second reading and adoption of CCO-22. We should have a number now.
Zero, three.
Zero.
Three.
Three. An ordinance of the city of Mount Shasta adding Chapter 15.56 to the municipal code, regulating the permitting process for electric vehicle charging stations. And E, second reading and adoption of CCO-22-04, adding Chapter 2.8 to the Mount Shasta municipal code regarding police acquisition and use of military equipment. F, second reading and adoption of CCO-22-05. I'm getting the hang of it now. Want to roll? An ordinance of the city of Mount Shasta opting into the Siskiyou County Integrated Solid Waste Management Regional Agency's Edible Food Recovery Ordinance. G, allocation of funds for requested beautification committee projects and activities. The budget adjustment is 2021, 22, into 22 and February '02. H is the police department monthly report for March 2022.
To the chair?
Yeah.
I'd like to pull item E for amendment, either today with the advice of deputy city clerk, or the next agenda, next to the city council meeting.
I would recommend you pull it for discussion today, so you can make clear what the amendments are, and we can bring it back for a first reading at the next meeting.
Anybody else like to change anything? You want to make clearer changes, you would?
Well, the amendment I suggest to be made regarding the order of operation with respect to purchasing military equipment by the police department, the amendment has been written. And as a matter of efficiency, it's suggested that we just pull this, amend it, have a first and second reading, and finalize it at order.
And so Kathy, if I understand you, can we have the first reading now with this new amendment?
No, you can't. You can pull it off and discuss it, and let staff know what the amendment is that you guys are recommending, and then we will bring it back for a first reading with that amendment.
Do we discuss this amendment, so we make sure what's going to be on the-
You can either discuss it now, or you can discuss it later on the agenda.
Well, let's push that off till next. Do you want to do it now, or you want to push it off till next meeting?
No, no, she's suggesting that we talk about it as an item later in the meeting, would be number 12, 13.
Just push it to the end of the meeting?
Yeah, so it would be the new 14.
Well, then, do I hear a motion to pass the consent agenda?
Move approval of consent agenda items A, B, C, D, F, G, H, including adoption of CCO-22-03, an ordinance of the city of Mount Shasta adopting Chapter 15.56 to the municipal code regulating the permitting process for electrical vehicles, charging stations by title only. And CCO-22-04, an ordinance of the city of Mount Shasta opting into the Siskiyou County Integrated Solid Waste Management Regional Agency's Edible Food Recovery Ordinance by title only.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda item eight, appointment of the planning commissioner. If I'm clear, we're going to take no action on that. Or does he?
On item eight?
On item?
Yeah.
You will be taking action on that.
He has resigned.
He's resigned?
Yes.
So we take, do we just take no action to not approve him?
No, no, we have to approve someone at the spot.
Correct. I have a staff report, if you like. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you recall, on February 28th, interviews were held for planning commission candidates, and subsequently, council appointed Nion Shepard to the position. On March 27th, staff received notification that Mr. Shepard was resigning his position for personal reasons. At that point, staff contacted the remaining three applicants. One who withdrew his application, and two, Von Boyinger and John Carr, are still interested in the position. The applications of the two remaining candidates are included in your agenda packet, and I believe both candidates are present if the council has any questions for them tonight.
Any questions about the two candidates from council before we open up to public comment?
I think that they would have the opportunity to speak to us if they wish as part of the public comment.
Right. Absolutely. Well, let's go there, then. Let's open up public comment and do you want to hop up and reintroduce yourself to us?
Yes, my name is Von Boyinger. I am a resident of the city of Mount Shasta, or Mount Shasta City. And good evening to council and staff members this evening. You know, I think the last interview, there wasn't a lot of conversation on the fact, but I'd heard later that somebody thought, or maybe I'd miscommunicated, that I wasn't business-friendly, but I wanted to point out, if nothing else this evening, that I'm a past president/CEO of a nationwide company, the representative Fortune 500 companies, and administrative hearings nationwide. I currently head the business engagement program for the California Labor Commissioner's Office, which is an outreach program to speak to employers on our laws and better understand them, and help them keep from breaking our laws. And last year, that program I headed up, we spoke to a little over 60,000 employers. It represented 2.5 million employees nationwide. I am also the subject matter expert for labor law for the division. And I've been an entrepreneur since my early twenties. I've owned three different businesses successfully, retired twice already from two of them. And so I think I've got a pretty good grasp of how business works, and what's good for business and what isn't. Also, that I do understand government, having worked for the state. And you know, I've seen some of the things in the small towns, I think, last time I mentioned, is that I came from the city of St. Helena, town of 5,000 people, and where growth was a good thing, but it wasn't good when it grew too much, and you had traffic and traffic jams at five and six o'clock at night, and you couldn't move anywhere. So they did too good of a job, so I'd like to see measured growth. But certainly growth, because I know in business, you need growth. And I've also seen a similar situation happen to Nion. There was a Patagonia store that just wanted to move three doors down there in St. Helena. Cost them $60,000 to get the right to do it. Thought that was pretty wrong. And also, that I do think about towns like Sun River and St. Helena, where you know, they got so popular that it almost ruined the ambiance of town. And as mentioned, I'm all for doing all that it takes to build this town and make it all that everybody wants it to be. But I don't want overpopulation, I don't want it being 20,000 people here either. So there's got to be a halfway middle place somewhere in there, I would think. Also, I'm a current member, a new member of the Mount Shasta Rotary. I've built a subdivision before, have applied for EIRs and received an EIR, and I've got six seconds, but I think I've said it all.
Thank you, Von. Because this really isn't public comment, per se, is this a, can they talk longer? Does council? Yeah, feel free to-
I didn't have much more, other than just to say I am for growth, just measured growth and purposeful growth, and happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Counselors, any questions?
Sure, I think we asked you before, but what do you think is a realistic projection for population growth in Mount Shasta?
Well, given the fact that, you know, I did-
We're at like 3,400 now.
Yeah, and I know that we've lost about 200 or close to 300 people since the year 2000, and I don't think that's a good thing. I think stagnacity is never a good thing. And so to answer your question is, I think, you know, right now, it'd be nice to see a population of around 5,000 people at least, and see what it goes from there. I know there's, you've got to have places to house these people. I'm thinking about this building I drove by over here, that's supposed to have 250 jobs, but it doesn't look like there's any. So there's got to be a lot of, you know, a lot of things to do and consider. I don't know what the city could reasonably hold, as far as what the community would like and what's in the best interest of the community. Certainly, I would be only interested in what is in the best interest of the community, not just the business owners, but certainly them, but also the population, the folks at large. And I would think, you know, I'm just guessing here, probably maybe, you know, I don't, I think 8,000 might be too many, I don't know. But 5,000 would probably be a good number. For starters, anyway.
Von, how do you feel about five and six-story buildings downtown?
I don't feel very good about it. I saw what they did, you know, I had a ranch in Reading for a number of years, and I saw what the largest building in town did, it was the jail. Somehow, they decided eight stories was an okay thing, and it just wasn't. And it was an ugly building, and it was so out of place. And the one thing I think I mentioned last time I was here is, any building we do, I'd like to see it fit in with the community, maybe the Alpine theme, something like that. And yeah, I think that's a way to do it, but you know, maybe three stories is too many.
Thank you, Von. Appreciate it.
All right.
John? We didn't get a chance to meet you, at least in person last time, so please feel to share a little bit about yourself.
Well, good evening, my name's John Carr. We moved here a couple of years ago. We bought property here seven or eight years ago. And my background is in education. I received my master's degree from San Jose State and worked there a number of years. Before, doing some traveling and then resettling in Reading, California. I've been a real estate broker for 40 years. I've worked with the city of Reading's planning department and the Shasta County planning department on many issues. I've been a director of the city of Reading's museum for a year. I was sat on the museum board for about 10 years after that. Raised, I was a single father at one time in my life, so I've had that experience. And now I'm a father again. I'm 80 years old, and I have a six-year-old daughter. I'm about to be 80 years old, and I have a six-year-old daughter. We lost our son a few years ago, and brought home a seven-month-old baby. I love living here. I moved here intentionally. I think it's a beautiful city. I think it has a good future, but it's going to be tough. I think there are a lot of things that could be done in our community at the present time that would not be real expensive, but would beautify the community. So as we all know, you only get one opportunity to make a first impression, and when somebody drives into this community, we like to see, we like them to see it in its best state. And I think there's some room for those kinds of things. I've worked on environmental organizations. I've been a director at the Sacramento River Trust. I've been a director of the Sacramento River Council, a founding director of that organization. We were charged with, charged ourselves with enhancing the Sacramento River in the Reading area and below, and trying to do what we could to save the remaining wild salmon. I grew up with wild salmon in the Sacramento River in Reading, California, when there were 120,000 fish in the winter run, and now there's probably 500 to 1,000 fish left in that run. We did our best, but it was an uphill battle all the time. I've always been involved with the arts, and so I'm aesthetically tuned in to things. I think I bring a lot to this position from that area. I have worked on subdivisions and subdividing property, and done many of those kinds of projects in the Reading area, small projects, not large projects, but small projects. I think I would be a real asset to the planning commission, and so I decided to put out the effort to try to be on it. And I appreciate the opportunity to have been able to make an application and to be here tonight, and to talk to you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, John. Counselors, questions?
Hi, John. I remember, was there an issue with timing, that maybe sometimes you're out of the country? Will you remind us of any, anything that would interfere with being able to join the meetings?
Oh, we took a vacation last-
Oh, that was it?
Yeah, we went to Mexico. We went to Mexico for a month, and had a great time, and it was warm.
Well, how dare you go have fun.
We put our six-year-old in a little Mexican school for two weeks, and she had a blast. And yeah, so that's-
Okay, for some reason, I had it in my mind that you were time-sharing between the two.
No, no.
Never mind.
No, no. No, no. Let's see, I'll get to one of the questions that you've asked about the population growth in this community. I think it's going to be tough, and I think we're going to have to make the right decisions. I think it's going to be up to the city, you and the city planning commission, to make some decisions that will start to draw people to this town. Being from out of town and looking around, I see a number of things that I would want to start talking about and addressing immediately, that have to do with appearance and cleanup in the downtown area. I also think you can combine beautification with fire reduction, and I think that we're living in an area that, we know we're living in an area that's prone to fire, and we are living in a city that could be devastated if the right fires started on the wrong day under the wrong conditions, and it could be very hurtful. So I think that the political bodies in this city need to start to address some very simple solutions, and they're not going to be popular, but they need to be addressed, that have to do with removal brush, yard cleanup, and different things like that that will save homes. I support the police. I've interacted with the police in the past, when I was a young man, on the other side, and gained a great deal of respect from them, for them during the process. So I have a colorful background, if somebody wanted to look into it. I was a product of the 1960s in the Bay Area, and you know, marched against the Vietnam War, managed a rock and roll band for two and a half years, you know. I've been to Europe and Africa, hitchhiked around North Africa and Europe, made 20 trips, probably 25 trips in Mexico, driven as far north as Alaska. So I have some experience. These 80 years have been pretty interesting.
John, Mount Shasta has had a reputation, at times in the past, perhaps even in the present, of being unfriendly to business. How would you recommend or perceive changing that without being too friendly to business?
I don't know about the past and being unfriendly to business in Mount Shasta, but I think that the correct businesses are going to be a real asset to Mount Shasta, but they need to have, have to do with what's already here. We need to support businesses that support the local community, and the aesthetics, and the mountains, and everything that we have to offer people. I don't see big business coming to Mount Shasta. I think Mount Shasta will grow more as a tourist destination, and then a very livable destination. We had friends visit us yesterday from the Santa Rosa area. She's a doctor, he's a school principal. They spent a couple of days with us, and they just loved it here. And one of the comments that Brian made to me yesterday, he said, "God, the people around here are so friendly." He said, "Everybody I've interacted with is so nice. It must be such a pleasure to live here." And it is. But we're dealing with winter, we're dealing with cold, we've got to find ways to bring people off the highway, to support the businesses that come to town. And you know, we can bring people off the highway, it's part of it, could be just a little better signage, welcome to Mount Shasta. There's some very simple things that could start to happen, that don't cost a lot of money, that I think would be very healthy for the community.
One more? You indicated there were a number of things that could be done, in addition to pulling people off the highway with better signage. What other ideas do you have at this moment?
Well, I would, I always believe in starting at home. I believe, one of the things I believe is that you should aspire to be the person or the situation that you admire, that you would want to be. And so I think the City Hall could use a paint job, the police department could use a paint job, right? The very first things people see in the city. When I was at, we'll give you an example, CVS Pharmacy the other day, on the south part of the parking lot, there's just a broken wooden-down fence that's been there forever. That's the kind of thing that's inexcusable, and it should be brought to a property owner's attention, and it should be dealt with. As I look down the main street of Mount Shasta, I see many business fronts that could use, you don't have to do a lot of remodeling, but you could use a paint job. You could spiff up the downtown, both with paint and flowerpots and some different things like that, just to, you know, when you go into downtown Sisters, Oregon, it is gorgeous. And they're a cold city, just like we are. But every- And they're a cold city just like we are, but every corner has flower pots, hanging flower pots and different things like that. It's beautiful. I think we could expand the concert series in the summer. What a wonderful series that is and how many people it draws out on Sunday evenings. There's what, three or four or 500 people up there and you've had really, really good musical acts and those kinds of things, more of that. And then I believe that this city should have, start to work on having some kind of art center, community center, a place where people could listen to music, lectures, see visual arts, et cetera, et cetera, that, that, those kinds of things. And I know that's expensive to do and expensive to maintain, but it needs to be part of the future vision of this, of what's going to happen in this city. And then, and then the other thing is, is, is like I mentioned before, let's get into some city cleanup. Let's, let's, let's make people responsible for their yards. If you're, if you're a landlord, let's have an agreement between the landlord and the tenant. Part of the agreement needs to be who's going to take care of the yard and it needs to be done. And, you know, it's a shame to drive around this city and see weeds right up to the sides of houses and those kinds of things that are fire danger and they're aesthetically very displeasing.
Thank you, John.
Okay. And thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Kathy, we go out to public comment now?
If there is anyone in attendance via Zoom and you wish to speak during public comment, please raise your hand now.
Well, counsel, let's start to have a little feedback. Tim, which way are you leaning?
Well, I like both these candidates, as I said before, I am leaning towards Vaughn for planning commission and John Carr, get him involved with the Downtown Enhancement Advisory Committee.
I'll second that idea.
So I'll move to apply Vaughn Boyinger to, Boyinger to planning commission.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First of all, both, to both of you, thank you. As we said when we entered this last time, there were, this is the best turnout we've had. And John, I think these, the two councils over here were quite serious when, we really need your help. There's a, the Downtown Enhancement Committee, not trying to put too much pressure on you here at the moment, but it's, we could really use your help.
All he said is true and we need him in that department.
Thank you very much. Item number nine is the 2022 fireworks ban in the city. Fire chief Duncan, you want to introduce this to us, please?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I brought, I'm bringing this up kind of early just because we're, I think we're all aware of the drought that we're being faced with and the projected precipitation forecast is very minimal. So part of the reason why I wanted to get this out there is I wanted to be able to kind of head this off for boosters. I know they use it as a large fundraiser and I didn't want them to make that big purchase of fireworks and have them sitting here. So I was trying to just get out in front of it to help prevent kind of what ended up happening last year. Couple of weeks ago, I brought this up at the Siski County Fire Chiefs Association meeting and all fire chiefs were in agreeance that for their local areas, the safe and sane fireworks probably aren't going to be a good idea for this summer. With that being said, the professional fireworks questions came up. And again, we were in agreeance, we're not seeing too many fires from the safe and saints, but the ones we are, we want to try to prevent. So we were, discussed the professional fireworks and we were all in agreeance to still support the professional fireworks. So like the ones that will be, I think we're planning on moving them back out to the lake again this year. Still support those because we're afraid that if we don't have somewhere for people to go, that they'll still want to have their fireworks, which again, I, I enjoy fireworks, but I just don't think this is going to be the summer for it. So I'd still like to show support of those. In the fire ban, you will see some verbiage changes. Again, we just wanted to bring this forth just for, just to get it out there, just kind of head it off. I don't think we're going to see any preset that's going to change anything, so.
Thank you.
All I have for that.
Thank you, chief. Questions, folks? Through the chair.
Yeah. To staff, is there a resolution number for this or are we just going to call it a ban?
It's an information-only item.
Any other questions? Let's open up for public comment. Anybody who'd like to speak on that? Just introduce yourself, please, and let us know where you're from.
Good evening, I'm Tom Hastings from Mount Shasta. Lived here since 1984 and have been in charge of Mount Shasta Community Fireworks for over 20 years. And we're the group that puts on the Fourth of July fireworks. Now, we all know that we're coming up against a really tough year. The drought is bad. I completely agree with Chief Duncan that it's a, it's the right move to, to ban safe and sane fireworks. The reason I'm here tonight, though, is kind of talk about the wording of how this originally came out. And Jonathan and I have had numerous discussions, I think I brought it up to him early on, that we need to look at this now and not wait till later. And my concern is how it's worded with all public display fireworks. What I do as a professional fireworks, power technician operator is classified as public display fireworks. Now, there's three types of fireworks that we're worried about. The first is illegal fireworks, which is the bulk of the fires that we see. Safe and sane fireworks are another type of fireworks that, you know, we used to sell in town every year. They're generally fairly safe until they're used in, in a manner that they weren't designed to use as, and they tend to create a lot of fires. Then we have the public display fireworks that I do, and our record is pretty darn good. There has been no fires, major fires especially, caused by public display fireworks done by professional power technicians. Now, last year, actually the last two years, we kind of ran up against a jam. COVID in 2020. Last year, with your approval, we were all set to do a show at Shastis Park and the lava fire stopped that. Otherwise, we would have proceeded with that and you would have seen that we could have done something very safely in town. This year, we're going to plan to go back to the lake. What I'm asking you to do is adopt language in this so that it doesn't tie our hands. Now, what happened last year is I helped draft the language to ban fireworks last year. That language was copied verbatim and put out by the county. So I think we need to watch our language and address it more specifically to the safe and sane industry. And remember that professional fireworks are already, already highly regulated. I can't do a show without a permit signed by the fire chief. And the fire chief has the ability right up to the moment that I'm pushing the button or any time during a show to stop the show, based off of any condition that he sees unfit. So we don't need an ordinance that stops that. He already has that ability to stop it. When you look at the language of the law, it says, safe and sane fireworks can only be sold for one week, June 28th through July 6th. Right now, though, if you own safe and sane fireworks, you can shoot them any time of the year. So we need to address that as well. Many cities have their own ordinances that address the time of year that you can do that. So I just really want to encourage you to review the language on this before we put it out there for other communities and the county to copy this and then tie our hands so I can't even have the chance of doing a show this summer. So I have, I can answer any questions. I do consider myself as your local fireworks expert. I've got over 20 years of fireworks experience, professional industry, and I've done shows all over California. Some people think that I just need to shoot fireworks in the backyard because it's an ego thing. I guarantee you, that's not the case. I'm already booked on numerous other fireworks shows. The first, second, and third of July, I'm going to shoot off so many fireworks that I'm going to be exhausted on the fourth. The only reason we do this is to give back to the community. We want to have something that we give to the community. And this is, this was the year that we were hoping to get back towards normal. We're all moving, you know, our masks are all gone, we're trying to move more towards normalcy. And this is what we've done for over 50 years in, in this town, is had Fourth of July fireworks. So I want to really tread lightly on how the language is, is put out. I know that this is basically copied off of the weed ordinance for, I don't know if it's an ordinance or just a direction, but it was basically copied off that. Now, this last year, remember, I had to sign a contract for $25,000. I was on the hook. So I shut the fireworks New Year's Eve in Wyreka. I had to go before Wyreka City Council because they had an ordinance that was a blanket ban on fireworks. And it said the exact same verbiage, public display fireworks. So I went before the Wyreka City Council and I explained, that's professional fireworks. So they had to actually suspend the ordinance for one night so we could shoot the fireworks. So I hate to see us get in that situation here where the fire chief already has the ability to do what that intent was, which is fully regulate what we do. So I really want to make sure that we don't overstep the boundary of what needs to be done and that the language is more concise to exactly what Chief Duncan was intending to do, was give notification to the safe and sane industry that this probably isn't going to be the year. We also know that unless we have some major changes in weather, this whole thing can change down the road. So we keep our fingers crossed that we do see a little change at some point in time. This weather system that's coming through this week was not on the forecast two weeks ago. So we don't know what's going to happen in the next, you know, we're literally less than three months away from the Fourth of July. We could have the event that we could actually do a show safely. We all know that Lake Siski offers a great opportunity for safe environment. We have a lake. If the lake's low, we'll be farther out and we're going to actually scale the size of the showdown so that we can stay in a safer footprint. But I don't want my hands tied before I have that opportunity. So I really appreciate that consideration. I appreciate working with Chief Duncan. And I really want to thank the council and staff last year for helping us, guide us through this process of trying to go to Shastis Park. Working with the city was fantastic. Staff was very good to deal with. We caught a lot of resistance from the public, but I really thank the city and the staff for how welcoming they were and how much they helped us try to get this process through.
Thank you, John.
So if you have any questions to me, I'm more willing to answer.
Thank you. Is there going to be this ordinance with the perfect language coming to us soon or is that not needed? Like does, is this not important at this point in time? There is no interest in bringing forth an ordinance? We don't want to tie our hands for future years. The ban on the other fireworks is already done and there's nothing that we need to take action on tonight or in the future?
Correct. And we don't want to do a ban because we don't want to have to go back and adjust it. If we go back to having normal winters and things go back to
Right.
Normal, I'm all for it. It is a great fundraiser for the high school, like it's good. So we don't want to put something in play that we're going to have to go back through every year and try to change and make it different.
So everything's in place already?
Everything's in place. We'll just go through and change some of the verbiage in it. I'll speak with Muriel Shee.
Through the chair. The fire chief has the responsibility and the ability to stop these things at any, any point, which is what he's tried to do. The other thing that probably needs to be in here, after talking with John Kenny, is that even though it says all public fireworks displays, it doesn't say use. So use needs to be a part of the, will be a part of the language. So you can't sell it, you can't display it. Does that mean, you know, it's just one of those, one of those wording type things?
You can't just shoot them off in your driveway or your backyard. So you basically were just stopping the use of this for, what, the remainder of 2022? Is that the idea?
Yeah. If we put in an ordinance like Tom discussed, they had to change the one in Wyreka, so that's why we're leaving it. We're just trying to leave it for the rest of 2022. Hopefully, maybe next winter, we'll start getting some precipitation.
Who has jurisdiction over the area by the lake? Is that a fire service or county?
It'll fall back to Cal Fire for the county fireworks.
Cal Fire, okay.
Through the chair. I'm a little confused, or at least I, maybe I'm a little less confused, but when I read this, I was thinking no fireworks for Fourth of July. Is that, so as part of the Fourth of July celebration, are we not going to have the traditional Tom Hastings fireworks?
So this is just for the city limits? We don't have jurisdiction. I don't have jurisdiction over the county and that's, I'm going to change the verbiage because we would still like to see the professional fireworks. Like Tom brought up, the, the training that they have to have, the permit process, the safety protocols that they have in place, there's engines there, there's, we don't have to deal with the reflex time. So those fireworks and the professionals up to the county, that's going to be theirs. We're just trying to, for the safe and saints and things in the city, just with the drought we're seeing, we're just trying to prevent any problems.
Okay, so.
It'll be up to the county on if they have the ones out in the county.
All right. Thank you.
We still in public comment? Not yet. Oh, yeah, we are. All right.
Could I add an order?
Yes.
If the county does not adopt an ordinance, this is a moot point because I can sell fireworks at my property, so we can have fireworks all around. So we need to crowd the line, which is going to be susceptible.
So any other comments?
At this point, professional firework display, Tom Hastings for the last decades, sort of in Mount Shasta, Fourth of July, looks like it can go forward, but what we're doing is banning use, sale, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay. So the high school, athletic group, et cetera?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Any comments or what line?
Yes. Our next speaker will be Johanna.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Good evening. This is Johanna and I just want to say I do support not selling fireworks in the city, but I do think it needs to be more of a regional, a regional approach as well. And I'm hoping maybe we can work with other cities and county, and the county to implement something, because people will just buy the fireworks elsewhere and bring it into town. And that could be problematic. And I just wanted to point out that this year we have much less water and rain and so everything's going to be dried out a lot more. So definitely fire is a concern as far as the public display at Fourth of July. I mean, you know, as long as it can be pulled in the last minute due to weather conditions and all of that, then that, that's fine. I still kind of believe we need to have a siren, an old-fashioned siren that I've brought up before, but that's not the topic. So, but I do support not selling fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you, Johanna. Kathy, anybody else? And there's, there's nothing to vote on here, this is just informational, is that correct?
I have one more question.
Please.
Chief Gibson, is there something that goes in line on your side of things for citations for illegal usage and selling? Has that, is that part of it or is that already in existence?
Absolutely. Once the, once the fire chief puts a fire ban up, any burning within the city, any officer can write, issue a citation, we can confiscate the fireworks. The fire department's kind enough to give us a quick code, basically with the fireworks code section, so all the officers have those in their cars. So once the ban isn't in effect, then any law enforcement officer, and then once we get our code enforcement officer through his course that he needs to have an order to issue citations, he will also be able to issue citations. So, yeah, we'll all work together and we're working on getting the fire department with their requirements so they can write the citations as well. So yes.
Okay. So hypothetically, if the three of us that live by the park hear the fireworks going off, we should call you?
They hear fireworks?
Okay.
Yep. You know, and that's going to be the, the big issue, you know?
Yeah.
Like Johanna was pointing out, people will go to the fireware, Nevada, where you can go to the Indian Reservation and buy the mortars and whatever you want, then they bring them back and they fire them off. We're trying to stop those. But even the sane and safes are, you know, out in the streets, I can't see that happening. And the fire chief's doing a good job now, let's start in March, and we'll bring it up again in April and May and June and July, so that everybody is aware that we're not going to have them, so that there's not this shock. So it's good to get ahead of it now and that'll take a lot of work off the officers on the Fourth of July.
Thank you.
John, anything?
Mayor, we have a late hand if you would like to take one more public comment.
Sure.
Our next speaker will be Peggy Rish.
Good evening.
Yes.
Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
I just I just, I do support what is proposed. I would just make a suggestion that if there could be an informational sheet put in as soon as possible, all the various lodging facilities in Mount Shasta, so that anyone who comes here to visit during this heightened time will also be aware what is prohibited. And thank you for getting ahead of the curve here. I appreciate it. That's it.
Thank you, Peggy. Kathy, anybody else?
No.
Let's move on to Agenda Item Number 10, approval of the program guidelines for the Siskiyou County CDBG's subsistence payments for the COVID-19 CV2 and CV3 allocations. And Muriel, would you introduce this to us, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. All of these CDBG programs have different guidelines that need to be adhered to as specified by HCD. The CDBG coronavirus funding has $1,244,000 allocated for subsistence payments for people within Siskiyou County. City of Mount Shasta is administering the countywide program with an MOU agreement between all of the applicable entities. City of Mount Shasta will be paying the approved subsistence payments, which some of you probably have seen as you've been signing checks. Payments are not made to the eligible household directly, only to the particular vendor, whether it be their, their mortgager or their city that, that is paying for, you know, whatever their utilities are, specific power, all of those types of utility type entities and mortgage entities have gone through approval for, for payment. So I'm asking that you approve the program guidelines for Siskiyou County CDBG subsistence payments.
Counselors, any questions? Do you have any, anybody wanting to speak on public comment?
We do have a hand raised, but I'm not sure if it's still up from the last item or not. We have Peggy Rish's hand is up.
Peggy, if you're out there.
Okay, it's not up any longer. If anyone else would like to speak on public comment, please raise your hand now. No hands raised.
Let's bring it back to council. Any discussion?
I move that City Council approve the program guidelines for the Siskiyou County CDBG substance, subsistence payments for the COVID-19 CV2 and CV3 allocations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda Item Number 11 is the 2022 drought policy. Todd was going to introduce this. Kathy, is, Muriel going to do this? Thanks.
Yeah, I'll handle that. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. We are wanting to do the emergency drought condition reduction policy as we did last year. The springs are producing at far less than they ever have at this time of year in history due to the drought. This is Cold Springs, which is the city's primary source of water. Due to the lack of snowpack on Mount Shasta, we're seeing similar reductions in the spring output this year. So that's what we're seeing at this point. So we would like to go ahead and do the emergency drought condition water reduction, starting, I believe it says June first. One of the things I do want to mention on this is that in the, it was pointed out by our, our city attorney, that the resolution that we have for this, in the number one, it says all major water users and residential customers. We need to strike the word major because really it's all water users and residential customers shall be required to reduce water usage by 30% with the following restrictions. So with that, that word coming out of, of the resolution, it would mean that all users would be subject to the restrictions. And basically, this is just a, the same restrictions that we had last year. And fortunately, this year, we now have a code enforcement officer. So if we do have issues that come up regarding misuse of water within the city, we will be able to have our, our officer go out and take care of that.
Kathy?
Our first speaker will be Johanna.
Johanna, and I just had a question on that policy. Not everybody uses, you know, there's vacation homes and other properties that do not always use water consistently on a full-time basis. And if their usage goes up because they're in town more, how is that going to work with the 30% reduction requirement? Because I assume that's from a benchmark of like last year or something like that. If you could address that. Thank you.
There are no other hands raised.
Let's bring it back to council. I've got a question. This is effective June 1st. Yeah, I, I think that's what the, and is there some reason we aren't doing this May 1st, given the really extraordinary level of, of low level of, of water flow? And, and we're down a tank?
Yeah, yeah. It makes no difference to me whatsoever. The biggest water use at this time of, of year isn't somebody coming to visit in a vacation rental. It's people who
Lawns.
water their yard, their, their lawn, or their gardens, or, or whatever that case, you know, may be. They have, you know, different types of, we're limiting people to, to the number of minutes. How you can determine that, I really don't know, other than having to watch somebody's meter and, and then be able to say, oh, you were in the shower 16 minutes instead of 15. I don't think that we have the ability nor the need to, to monitor that. I think this is more about the public understanding that we have, we're having water difficulty and shortages, and that we're not getting as much from our springs, and to please be mindful of, of that issue and follow these guidelines in your everyday life to try to reduce your water usage by 30%. I think that's, that's the intent of this. I don't think that, for instance, we've always had the issue of people are, are washing their car or something and letting the water simply run down the street. There's always, always been a prohibition regarding that. So when we see those sorts of things, or we, we know that we're only supposed to be watering on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and we see someone that's obviously watering not on their watering day, then, you know, it behooves us to, to remind those folks that, that these, these rules are in place, which is, which is what our community service liaison would be able to do. Oh, by the way, Mr. Jones, did you know that we have this, these water things in place? And you're not supposed to be watering on these particular days? You know, could you please follow, follow the rules? That's, I think what that's more about than the heavy stick, per se.
Any other commentary from council? Any commentary on May 1st versus June 1st?
Do you want a motion to amend?
Well, I'd like to hear how folks are, how you feel about it. I'd, fine. John, got any thoughts?
And then Muriel said something about changing the water, the language. It says all major water users. You want that to read all commercial water users?
No, I wanted to say all water users.
All water users.
Just strike the word major.
Just strike major.
And leave residential customers? Leave that the way it is? Okay. So I'll move, move to amend this resolution to read effective date, May 1st, 2022. Beneath that, number one, strike major. So it reads all water users.
Hear a second?
Second.
Well, I, I would, can we move to adopt this resolution as amended?
Okay. We have to approve the amendment first, no?
We can, we can move to adopt the resolution with the proposed amendments without having to have a separate vote.
Yeah.
So this would be CCR 22 dash
09.
09, and it would
Resolution at City Council, City of Mount Shasta, establishing an emergency drought condition water reduction policy as amended?
Second.
Oh, by title only?
Second.
We're getting good at this. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next agenda item is the discussion of possible action of the policy to allow for short-term rental transfers during this, the moratorium. And City Planner Teresa Spade, would you please introduce this?
I'm Teresa Spade. I'm the city planner, and I brought this item before you last month. So last month, at the city council meeting, we talked about the moratorium extension, and that was approved. So the moratorium on short-term rentals, new short-term rentals, has been approved until February of 2023. As part of that discussion, it was brought up that there was a concern about transfer of short-term rentals with the transfer of property. And the way that the business licenses currently work, they are issued to a person rather than a property. And so just as a matter of course, with the moratorium, that would normally mean that transfers would not be allowable if there was a moratorium, moratorium on the issuance of new business licenses. So to make it possible for an existing active legal short-term rental to continue to be maintained during the moratorium, I have drafted a memorandum that would allow for business licenses to be issued to the new property owner.
So that certainly seems like a reasonable thing for you to do. I do have a question, which may be beyond your ken, and that is, how do we then prevent new owners of these short-term rentals from arguing hardship, reliance, et cetera, if and when we make changes to the short-term rental ordinance?
So if there is an existing business, it's, it's essentially grandfathered in. So when we make changes to the short-term rental ordinance, the business license holders, even the new ones, if they get it through the transfer, would be grandfathered in. So that is to say, if we say that there's a cap, or if we say in the ordinance that they're only allowed in certain zones, if the existing owners of short-term rental business licenses don't necessarily meet those criteria, that doesn't mean that they have to shut down. That they're essentially going to be grandfathered in.
Well, there's, if I read this agenda item correctly, there's no action that the city council has to take, is that correct?
That is correct. It, you, I guess the action would be to approve the, the transfer policy. That would just be, the, the policy is just a code interpretation is what it is. It's saying, well, there's not a lot of clarity in, in, in the way that we wrote this, so we can interpret it this way or a different way. And this is a policy says, that says, this is the way that we're going to interpret this every time. And so this is a discretionary call on the part of staff. And so it is helpful to get approval from city council so that we're all on the same page with this.
And one more question comes to my mind, somewhat tangential, but when a person receives a license and there is a change of zoning, they can't make the argument that they relied and, and are necessarily grandfathered in. I believe that is correct under the law.
That is, so if there are zone changes, there's different ways that grandfathering can work. If somebody's property, if there's a zone change, a general plan, change is someone's zone. They're not grandfathered in with the old zone because that's just not a thing. You know, there's a new map, it shows the new zones, and they need to meet the new rules. However, they can be grandfathered in for some existing uses that were specific to the, the previous zone. So if, for example, someone had a residence in a residential zone, we do a zone change and all of a sudden it's industrial, they still have a residence. That doesn't mean that they can't live in their residence anymore. That residence is grandfathered in. But that means that they don't get to build another residence or apply for a new residential use.
So the reason I ask these questions is I don't mind going forward with the, the ability to transfer the short-term rental licenses while there's the moratorium. I don't want it to create a bar or some sort of block in the city's future efforts when it comes time for the city to consider and possibly adopt a short-term ordinance.
Is this a precedence argument?
Pardon?
Is this a precedence argument?
Well, something like that. So I would like, if the city council is going to adopt this, I would like us to adopt it with the understanding that this is during the moratorium, but does not tie the city council's hands in any of its future actions having to do with short-term rentals.
Yeah, so if, if you look at the language of the memorandum specifically and look at the last paragraph of the memorandum, it says during the moratorium. So it is very specific that we're talking about a limited timeframe.
Yeah, I wanted to clear on the record also. Yeah, I wanted to clear on the record also. So we can have a record of this matter.
Absolutely.
When the issue comes up next year.
Yeah. So, so the only thing that this is going to change is that if we did not follow this policy, that means that if someone sold a property that was currently being used as a short-term rental, that use would end during the moratorium and that would not be able to continue.
Right.
With this policy, that use can transfer to the new owner during the moratorium. And that is the extent of what this policy allows.
I'm comfortable with that. Any other questions, John?
Teresa?
Any public comment on this?
Speaker will be Peggy Rish.
Hi Peggy. Peggy, we can't hear you if you, if you're need to unmute, unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. I forgot to do that. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes.
So anyway, I looked in depth around what's being proposed here and you know, there is, there is some case law out there that, you know, it's not something that the city has to do, but I understand why you want to basically give existing property owners their use, but it really is kind of a conflict of your own issuing a business license. As the city planner said, they, they, according to your own municipal code, they go with the, the owner, not the property. So, and I just mentioned this because many of the short-term rentals that were issued in R2 and R3, the residential areas, never went before the planning commission, never went for public review. And, and that was because there was a, an interpretation that these in R2 and R3, because they weren't explicitly prohibited, they would be allowed. But you have a home occupation permit process and that was never enacted for running a business in R2 and R3. So if you renew this for existing owners in R2 and R3, that process is still circumvented. And that's my only hesitation here. So I see that there is that aspect for those properties in R2 and R3 that never did go through a home occupation permit process in order to be a business working in the home, that actually met the criteria of home occupation permit. And that's all I want to say. It doesn't correct it.
Thank you, Peggy.
Speak during public comment? Please raise your hand now.
Yeah.
I just have one question. This new change be subject to revocation if there was some abuses or noise problems or anything like that with the new, the new owners?
So to answer that, it will be subject to
The same thing as the current owners are subject to, which right now is we don't have the ordinance in place yet. However, when we do have the ordinance in place, everyone, including those that are grandfathered in, will need to follow our new ordinance requirements for the short-term rentals.
Right. Thank you.
And I, I wanted to expand a little bit on what Peggy was saying because I'm not sure if anyone, if everyone fully understood what she was saying. So I've had a conversation with Peggy about the short-term rentals and she's really smart and she understands planning. I'm going to tell you that just for starters, but one of the things that she understands about the short-term rentals is that they, if viewed as a home occupations type use, technically should have been required to get a use permit all along. And back in, I don't know, I'd say 10, 15 years ago, short-term rentals were required to get use permits. Because the way that the Home Occupations Code is written, the way that it's written, it essentially says, if you have a home occupations that you're asking for, and it doesn't meet this very strict standard that we set forth in the Home Occupations Code, you need to get a use permit. And so somewhere along the line, that stopped happening and I'm not really sure why that stopped happening in the city of Mount Shasta. But at some point, short-term rentals started being issued with business licenses and were not required to get use permits. They were no longer viewed as a home occupations type use. So it's kind of a, at this point, because we have the moratorium, because we are looking at a brand-new process, because we are writing an ordinance, that ordinance draft is going to the planning commission at the meeting next week. Hopefully they will have some recommendations to bring forward to you soon. I just kind of think all of that's water under the bridge. But I think that that's, I just wanted to point that out. I think that's what Peggy was getting at.
Thank you.
Yep.
Kathy, anybody else? Let's bring you back to council. Questions?
So I think I'm supportive of being able to transfer licenses from existing owners during this moratorium. But I don't want it to necessarily be viewed as grandfathering. And I think that if there is going to be a transfer from an existing owner to a new owner during the moratorium, there ought to be notice to the potential new owners that they may or may not be able to continue the short-term rental when a new ordinance gets adopted.
Point, you think that's going to be an acceptable procedure for us to follow?
I think it would be as long as they have advance notice. Because then they are buying with the understanding, they're basically taking a risk that it, it may work out, it may not work out for them.
If I understand this correctly, Teresa, help me out here, please. Wouldn't all current short-term rental owners be subject to the same uncertainty in the future? Because I don't think, if, I don't think the intent of this was, if there was a transfer between the current owner to a new owner, that they fall, that the new owner falls into a different category than, than all the other existing license holders. That, I don't think that was, is that your intent?
I think that is what the intent was. And let me kind of explain from my perspective, why I think that that wouldn't be a great idea. So I believe that as things stand, if someone has a short-term rental and they have a business license for it, we get brand-new ordinance, new codes that say there's some restrictions and that perhaps not everyone in the future is going to have the same ability. Okay? If somebody, the people that have those business licenses, they still have the, the right to renew those every year as long as they don't become a nuisance. You know, they continue to meet the requirements to keep, to keep it up, pay their, you know, their dues, all that sort of thing. Now, if you sell a property to someone and you are transferring the right to have a short-term rental, the value of that property sale is going to be based on that right for that use. And that value is not necessarily going to be the same as the value of a property as a single-family residence. So if somebody buys a property thinking that they have a specific amount of value and they're going to be able to maintain that, they're going to be able to make their payments.
Right.
You know, and you're telling them, well, you know, you kind of have that right now, but we might take that away from you in six months.
Yeah.
You, you haven't really given them anything. You know, you've essentially negated the, the, the intent of the memo because you are saying, this could be worth something, it might not, you're taking a gamble here.
To the chair. My interpretation is that of the city planner, that this changing of the, the previous moratorium is to allow this transfer the end, that it doesn't go away once this moratorium is over.
Yeah, there's, there's no new category of, of, of owner of a current short-term rental license, but because it was transferred during the moratorium, somehow they lose some semblance of permanence that all the other license holders have.
So we have, we have 51 approximately short-term rental licensees in the city. We might have a new ordinance in the next four or six months. Would it not be better policy realistically to just keep the existing situation of saying the short-term rental license belongs to the owner, not to a transferee? Because we're dealing with a relatively short period of time. We're probably dealing, the, the number of short-term rentals that, properties that might be sold in that four or six-month period would be perhaps minimal. It sounds like we might be creating more of a problem for us and perhaps for them, but certainly for the city by changing the interpretation now rather than simply keeping the status quo until the new ordinance gets adopted.
I guess that's, I'm coming to the same conclusion you are, but I think we mean completely different things. Which is everybody who has a license has a license. And if somebody transfers that license to a new owner, they have a license. Nothing changes until the new ordinance with the new criteria about short-term rentals, assuming there are any changes, whatever that is, that comes out in four to six months, they're all equally affected.
If I understand correctly, the current situation is a short-term rental license cannot be transferred from one owner to the another.
So based on the way that business licenses operate, that is correct. But that wasn't the intent of the moratorium. And I, I would tend to agree with Mayor Collings in saying that the status, keeping the status quo would mean that we're not impacting property owners until the ordinance is in effect.
To the chair. I believe that this particular item came to council because we had a few realtors in our audience at the last meeting and Sandra's here now. And they were concerned about the loss of revenues and, and spending in our community if we don't have this transfer for those short months. So to that purpose, I, you know, I think two things can be said. One is you say, what will it hurt to not? But what will it hurt to do would be the same counterargument of how many sales will there be? One or two tops maybe? What would it hurt to let those two licenses keep in existence? Would be my question.
Anybody else? John?
I've got a migraine in the search.
I'm sorry about that. Councilmember Snacklet?
Well, I'm about ready to make a motion to approve this or show support for.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
Yeah. This is not a resolution, correct? All right. So I'll move that the council approve and show support for the policy memorandum of April 11th, written by the city planner regarding transfer of short-term rental licenses during the current moratorium.
I'll second that.
I'd say by title only, but it's, I don't know if there is a title.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll say aye as well.
Thanks. The final agenda item is the green waste cleanup day and Acting City Manager.
We have to revisit the consent agenda pool.
Oh yeah, we're going to revisit. Yes, thank you. Actually, we're going to take a few minutes here. Can we adjourn for five minutes for a bathroom break and we'll be right back in five. Yeah, I'll call the meeting back to order. Agenda item number 12, excuse me, 13, was the green waste cleanup day. Acting City Manager, Mary Elterel, would you
Sure. Basically, this is just a report to say that we are working on a date and location to authorize green waste data for the city of Mount Shasta. We're working through the logistics of this. Fortunately, Todd has worked his way through this in the city of Dunsborough. So we'll, we'll, we'll copy some of those, some of those kinds of things and hopefully not have the same issues that we've had in the past. I know that we had an email from a concerned citizen regarding having green waste at Roseburg and basically, why don't we chip it up and spread it all over the Roseburg property? Which, you know, on the surface, sounds like a really good idea, except that, that particular property is a brownfield site. And we're still doing groundwater testing and soil testing in that area. And we don't want to add any things that, that could skew the, the history of testing in, in all of these different locations on that site. So with that, I, I think we're going to be either working with Virica Transfer Station or perhaps Waste Management, who I've been working with. They're our franchisee and they are interested in, in providing that service as a public outreach type thing. So I'm currently working with them to, to perhaps use them for those sorts of things. We'll be using our Public Works folks and city employees to monitor and basically police the particular program for the green waste because in, in the history of entities trying to do this, people try to take advantage of, of the particular thing that we're trying to do and try to bring things into the, into the mix that shouldn't be there. And people who don't necessarily live in, in the city, trying to take advantage of that particular thing. So with that, So with that, lessons learned and other, with other agencies, we'll be developing this hopefully to happen May, June, sometime, sometime then. It'll be during the week. It'll be like an 8:00 AM to noon type thing. So anyway, we'll get lots of advertisement out to folks, probably on their utility bills as well as a flyer, those sorts of things. I believe Todd had said that the city of Dunsborough had approved for their event about $5,000. I think this is something that we can definitely cost, if there is any cost, through our solid waste improvement fund. So I don't think we need necessarily a budget adjustment at this point for, for this particular project. I think it can be absorbed there. Anyway, we'll be working on that and getting it out sooner than later as people are cleaning up and getting their gardens going and those sorts of things.
To the chair.
Yeah.
So if I understand correctly, this is really just for informational purposes for tonight. No action required.
Correct.
Thank you.
We're not going to vote. There's no motion to approve a date or a location?
I don't know those dates or those locations, so I don't know how we would do that.
Well, we just won't.
Thank you very much.
Any questions, folks so far?
Sounds like an update to me.
Yeah. Do we take public comment on this? Yeah. Let me open that up. Does anybody here like to comment?
Our first speaker would be Johanna.
Hi, Johanna. Want to unmute yourself?
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. I just wanted to say thank you very, very much for taking this, this idea I had a couple, you know, about a year and a half ago to the next level and, and making it happen. It's really, really important to be fire safe and also to help beautify our town. And I wanted to just remind, I didn't hear anything about, you know, groups of like students and stuff. We could get the community involved to help those less fortunate who don't have the ability due to their health or whatever to clean up their own yard. And maybe we could encourage certain groups or get the beautification committee involved to kind of help with that process because it will be a difficult fire season this year, I think. So, and just anyway, thank you, thank you, thank you. This is really awesome.
If there's anyone else in our Zoom audience that would like to speak during public comment on this item, please raise your hand now.
Counselors, if there's no other questions, we will pick up the consent agenda item E, number 7E, that we want to have an amendment. John, would you enter that, please?
Okay. So staff has presented council with the following amendment to section 2.80.060 regarding police department and military equipment. F, all military equipment requested after January 1st, 2022 shall have city council approval prior to acquiring by the Mount Shasta Police Department with the following exception. Number one, exigent circumstances as detailed in section 2.80.050 of this code. So this is, this, this happened pretty quickly when I made that future agenda item motion to improve the ordinance that we had just started, which, of which we had approved the first reading. This came out very quickly. I thought it would take a little more time. So after discussing this with deputy city clerk, it seems most efficient to incorporate this into the code for a new first reading, maybe at the next city council meeting and then following meeting for a second reading. So that's...
John?
That's why I pulled this.
Do you have a motion?
I would move that the language just read by Councilmember Stackfluff be added to the military equipment ordinance draft and be brought back to the council at the next meeting as a continued first reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There were no outside meetings. So we go to the future agenda items in meetings. I know there's a meeting Wednesday at the...
What time is that meeting?
Lola meeting.
Oh.
Yeah. And...
I can't attend that.
Yeah. Well, if you can't, you can't.
I will be attending.
Yeah, I'll be attending too.
John?
Any... No, he's, I know the answer to that question.
I can go to that and make money.
Or go to work. Right. And, or you can go to that and lose money. And so are there any other future agenda items being proposed?
I had a question about the planning workshop next week.
Yeah.
Is that still happening? And if so, when and where?
It will be taking place here, I believe, off the top of my head. I think it's starting at 4:30. I'll double-check that. It'll be before the planning commission meeting.
Any other agenda items you want to add? Going once? Going twice? We are adjourned.